Okay, welcome everybody to Oakdale City Council's Regular Meeting, October 11th, 2022. Sarah, would you do roll call, please? Or Katie? Good evening, Sarah.
Hi.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Swedberg?
Here.
Councilmember Zabel? Mayor Ranky?
Here. Please join me now in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if that was an unfair introduction to our new city clerk...
Yes.
Let me introduce Sarah Ludwig and her first meeting tonight.
Rover.
So learning the ropes, and we're looking forward to your participation with us. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I apologize.
It's okay.
Okay, councilors, we have the amended agenda in front of us. Upon review, do you want to make any changes or any comments about it? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any conversation? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the amended agenda is approved as presented. Thank you. The next topic on the agenda is the approval of minutes. There's two of them. One is the City Council Workshop from September 27th, 2022, and also the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes, also September 27th, 2022. Taking that first one first, the workshop, councilors, upon review, any adjustments or clarifications that you want to note? Could I have a motion then, please?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then those meeting minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. The second one then deals with the regular meeting minutes from the Oakdale City Council, same date, September 27th, 2022. Any comments or questions? Could I have a motion then, please?
So moved.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those meeting minutes are approved as presented. Thank you. The next item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing. Public hearing is a chance where there's typically a development occurring, and it allows the applicant of the development to present their project, and also a chance for people to participate and make comments out of people from the audience or residences. So I'm going to introduce Luke tonight. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, Luke McClanahan, City Planner. So this request, if I can bring up the doc cam, let's see, just for a little bit of a visual here. So the request that we have before us tonight is a 155-unit market rate apartment building. The location, this area is east of I-694, south of 34th Street. This is the Oakdale Marketplace PUD, Planned Unit Development, and the site in question is specifically on the west side of Marketplace, so south of 34th Street. The site is about four and a half acres, it's a vacant parcel, and the request involves a PUD amendment to allow for a multifamily development because the current PUD only allows for commercial uses. The request also involves a preliminary and final plat and a site plan. So the 155-unit apartment building would be four stories tall with private amenities. There would be new sidewalks along 32nd Street and also Marketplace. The proposed parking, if I can move to a better site image, and then just a little bit closer at the site. 250 parking spaces, which would include both surface parking and underground parking, so 155 underground parking spaces and 95 surface parking spaces. It would also have an underground stormwater infiltration system. So in terms of looking at the zoning and the comp plan, the comp plan guides this area for mixed use, and again, it's located within the Oakdale Marketplace PUD. The plat requirements for the site are relatively straightforward. However, there are several significant conditions of approval that I would just like to highlight here. They include park dedication, an additional sewer availability charge, and improvements to the intersection of 34th Street and Marketplace North. And just for reference, the cost of improvements that the city estimates would be involved with this development would be roughly $100,000. For site plan and PUD deviations, deviations are being requested from setback requirements and height requirements. So setback requirements being 30 feet, that's proposed, whereas the required is 46 feet, 10 inches, and that is the height of the building. The height of the building is capped at 40 feet, so the deviation there is that it be an additional six feet and 10 inches taller than that. For parking requirements, the standards are 376 units, or excuse me, parking spaces, and the applicant is proposing 250. They did provide supporting documentation. That's a parking study that was embedded in the traffic generation memo that was also included in the packet. The other deviation that's being requested is for landscaping for the boulevard frontage and also some vegetation along the parking lot as well. The boulevard frontage, the requirement is 20 trees and the proposed is 15. Staff finds that the deviations are appropriate as noted in the staff report, and the Planning Commission, when they reviewed this request, they concurred with staff's recommendation to approve the request subject to the conditions outlined in the staff, in the resolutions. I would like to read those really quick. So the conditions listed in the, for the plat, approval of an amendment to the PUD, execution of a site improvement performance agreement, approval of the public improvement construction plans by the city engineer, permits and approvals obtained from other regulatory agencies, and proof of approvals be provided to the city, an additional sewer availability charge of $300 per residential unit to cover the costs of increased flow to the lift station at the corner of Ideal Avenue and Stillwater Boulevard. The developer entered into an agreement with the city to contribute towards the cost of improvements at the intersection of 34th Street North and Marketplace North. And finally here, the final plat must be revised as necessary to meet all requirements of the city attorney's plat opinion, and that the buyer slash developer shall further adhere to all recommendations of the city attorney regarding title matters and recording instructions for instruments associated with development. Moving on to the site plan, excuse me, conditions. First one here, permits and approvals must be obtained from the Valley Branch Watershed District. Update the site plan to show the locations of all outdoor ground mechanical equipment and trash and recycling areas, along with proper screening of these features. Obtain approval from the city's fire marshal for the proposed fire hydrant locations. Obtain a determination and approval from the city's utility superintendent to remove the water stub on Marketplace North. If necessary, the developer provides a booster pump for domestic water and fire protection for the building if needed, based on the height of the overall building. And finally here is the developer includes additional placemaking and decorative elements along the east side of the building, fronting Marketplace North. With that, I just wanted to show a couple updated documents here that did not quite make the packet, and this is just the landscaping plan. There's just some minor updates along, particularly along Marketplace. It's very difficult to see here on the screen. And then, you know, the developer would like to show this. I guess, what do you call this?
Section.
Section. Doesn't quite fit on the screen there, but it shows, you know, the elevation, the changes, and the street, the pedestrian way, and then the building. So I would imagine that the city council has questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Great. Thank you very much, Luke. Councilors, any questions? I have one question about the item number seven on the preliminary and final plat, and this is the one dealing with the potential contribution, or contribution towards the cost of improvements at intersection 34th Street North and Marketplace North. How does that, is that going to get, how do you envision that? I ask because if it's nebulous, I've been involved in conversations with developers that it doesn't turn out quite as well as we had hoped at this stage.
Sure, I think we have a little bit of wiggle room to work on that with, so that would be a condition in the site improvement performance agreement, working with city engineering and working with the developer to make sure that language is in there. Am I answering the question?
My fear is, is the developer's going to say, you know what, we're bringing all these things to the table, which is really going to be beneficial to the city, that intersection improvement really is going to benefit the city and not the development. When it gets to a loggerhead like that, that's what I'm asking, is there it possible to put more definition around what that agreement is going to be, or values that can be discussed tonight?
Certainly, I think if the council wants to beef up the recommendation or the, excuse me, the condition of approval, I think we could add a little bit more substance there, if you'd like.
Maybe the way to do this, and it's brand new, so I didn't prep you for this, so also I did another fast one on you. But maybe the way to do this is that when the applicant has a chance to present and just acknowledge and answer questions, maybe if you'd be willing just to comment on that...
What do you guys see?
And maybe that'll be good enough as a public record tonight.
Sure. I understand.
That was my only question. Councilors, anything else? I'll invite the applicant up to expound a little bit if you'd like to, before I open it up to anybody else in the audience. Good evening.
Fantastic. My name's Josh McKinnon with Measure Group, a consultant that's been hired by the applicant. So I would just say Luke and his team have done a phenomenal job of kind of preparing the staff report and kind of teeing this conversation up. We're excited to be a part of the city of Oakdale and really have worked hard since kind of, kind of early stages of the project, working with city staff, at a pre-development meeting, as well as kind of going through the city's workshop process, planning commission, and now we're here tonight. I would just want to comment just briefly, if Luke wouldn't mind just putting up the section that we had prepared, and I can explain kind of its relevance to tonight. So a couple of the feedback items from Planning Commission that were relevant, or we certainly wanted to start to build on as we brought plans toward city council, was to really try to expound on kind of how this building will address the street at Marketplace. And so what we've done between Planning Commission and council is actually amended the architectural plans of the building to include some walkout units that would directly front Marketplace. We think one of the concerns that was kind of voiced during the workshop process was just kind of the lack of interaction with neighbors and things like that, especially within more of a mixed-use environment. So it's something that we think is at least starting to kind of allow and kind of activate Marketplace a little bit more than making it a cars-only street. Along with that is just to provide some landscape buffer from those units that are walkout units, and also kind of increase landscaping activity that is along Marketplace. And what our thought process, meaning that, you know, we can't necessarily control what's happening across the street, but the thought process would be that something similar in terms of the level of landscape and kind of street activation would be present along the opposite side of Marketplace when those plans come forward. So I just wanted to touch on that piece. The other, the other concern that the planning commissioners had was really relative to the parking ratio and what our plan would be, you know, if we ended up being short. So we reached out to the pipeline folks and confirmed that in the event that we are short, we can create surface improvements to that pipeline area and provide additional parking over that. And the nice thing about this particular instance, and this particular PUD that we are currently in, is it's a cross-parking easement across the entirety of the development right now. So I think the question that we typically get when we're saying, oh, we'll build it later, is well, what happens in the immediate need? What happens if you are short parking? Well, in this case, we do kind of have a little bit of flexibility relative to the usability of our neighbors and their parking stalls while we're constructing the additional parking, if it's required. So those are, those are the kind of the major items I wanted to cover, and obviously here for any questions that the council might have.
Sure.
Oh, and of course, the $100,000, let's, let's cross that T. So in terms of the $100,000, we completely understand, you know, relative to our impact of additional pedestrians and kind of our residents will be using those sidewalks and wanting to cross and use trails that are north of our, of the county road, and certainly don't have any problems contributing to $100,000 to kind of make those improvements as necessary. In terms of the mechanism for how we do that, whether it's a SEPA or whatnot, we don't necessarily have a preference. I think the SEPA probably gives us some flexibility, but, but relative to the dollar figure, I don't know if we have an issue with that at all.
Come on up. Good evening.
I'm Deshaun Dunn, I'm the applicant. I do have a question though, because it just kind of got brought up right now, so it's something the city will do, right?
Is it city or county?
Or county.
My understanding is the city, but I'm looking over at city engineering, they're shaking their head, yes.
Yeah.
So yes, it would be the city, city.
Okay. Yeah, so it's a city responsibility, the mechanism of the, I would then pay for it somehow with the development agreement. Either it's a one-time payment or we assess it over a period of time. We'll figure that out in the development agreement.
So to clarify, you're saying you will pay for it?
No.
Up to?
Up to $100,000.
Up to $100,000. Yes.
Yeah. No, so it's not on my general contractor to do it, it's the city will do it.
Right.
I will reimburse the city.
Right.
That's the mechanism.
That's correct.
That's what I'm hearing and thinking.
And because I brought it up tonight, first time...
Yeah.
And we're in the throes of getting this thing decided, having this conversation is what is beneficial to me, that it's public record, you're in support of the need to do something.
Of course.
It's going to be reasonable, as we will be reasonable also.
Yeah, yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page on the mechanisms.
And that mechanism will be detailed in the, in the agreement.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Very good.
So any questions for us as the applicant?
Councilors?
Figured the one up I had.
Susie, Annalee?
No.
Colleen?
Fantastic.
So, thank you very much.
Yes.
I will now open the public hearing to comments from the audience. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment on this project? Excuse me. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment? Finally, is there anybody in the audience who would like to comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and bring it back up to the front for counselor comment. Now, in light of Councilmember Zabel not being here, let's go down the path, if you would, and just give me your, give me your sense about how you're, how you're looking about this project, supportive or not, or concerning.
Fully supportive.
Susie?
I'm supportive.
And these aren't motions, these are just a sense of what's going on.
I support it.
Okay.
I think it's a great location for this.
Okay. So then it won't surprise you that I'm still not in favor of it, not because of the quality of the applicant or not, because of the quality of the project. I'm not in favor of making this change to the PUD for several reasons. One is, as we're getting into final decisions with Willowbrook and making multifamily housing choices there, and also in the south part of town over by the Helmer Station, the Gold Line, we, when asked by other developers about the potential to locate in this general Oakdale Marketplace area, we directed them towards the other places where there's taxpayer investment. So I'm holding true to that. And there's not an absolute need to do this because it's a PUD amendment and also a series of variances. So with that said, I'm going, unless you have comments, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I will make a motion to waive reading.
I'm sorry, Jake. Councilmember, let's take one at a time, since we have the three actions.
Well, that, yeah.
Yeah, that's what he's doing.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt ordinance number 886, approving an amendment to the Oakdale Marketplace Planned Unit Development.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes three to one. Can I have somebody make a motion about the second one?
I'll make a motion to waive reading and adopt Resolution 2022-105, approving the preliminary and final plat of Oakdale Marketplace Sixth Edition with conditions included in the attached resolution.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion passes three to one. Final, final motion, please.
I'll make a motion and waive reading and adopt Resolution 2022-106, approving the site plan for Oakdale Marketplace Apartments with conditions included in the attached resolution.
Could I make a, an ask for an addition, and I don't know how to exactly do it, because I don't think we've gotten a picture or an illustration of the walkout apartments that you mentioned along the face towards Marketplace. Would that make sense to add that as a, as a condition, that they do have the walkouts? Or is that above and beyond?
What do you, can you be a little more, I mean, what do you mean by a walkout?
Well, they talked about it.
Yeah, welcome again.
You added that, right?
Yeah, we have, so we have added, we believe, six walk, units that actually directly access Marketplace.
Right.
So that's, that's kind of what we're talking about. And relative to a building elevation, we don't have, we have not provided one. We have provided a civil plan which shows those walkouts.
So that, that notion makes a lot of sense to accommodate or to address some of the planning commission's needs, and I think it's going to be an attractive element to your development.
That's fine.
So my request would be to modify your motion to include up to six...
Walkouts?
Walkouts towards...
Five or six.
Yeah, we leave it six. Just be careful, let's say five.
I'll always say four to six.
Yeah, four to six.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Right.
So modify and add one more condition to modify the plan to include four to six walkout units towards Marketplace.
That's fine.
Would you go up to that? So a motion and amendment, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and amendment and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Kind of a weird deal.
Yeah.
Good night.
Yeah, you too.
Next up is a proclamation that I get to read, and here we go. So this is a proclamation. Whereas Infants Remembered in Silence, Inc., and many other nonprofit organizations work with thousands of parents all over the state of Minnesota and across the United States who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy through early, and through early childhood. And whereas many of these parents live in, deliver in, have a child die in, or bury a child in our community. And whereas Infants Remembered in Silence, Inc., a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, was founded in 1987, 35 years ago, to offer support for parents whose child, children, died from miscarriage, ectopic pregnancy, molar pregnancy, stillbirth, neonatal death, birth defects, sudden unexplained death of a child, sudden infant death syndrome, illness, accidents, and all other types of infants and early childhood death. And whereas bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually on October 15th with a candle lighting at 7:00 PM. Some will remember their child or children in their homes, while others will remember them in small gatherings around the state, across the nation, and around the world. And this would unify these parents in tribute to their children. And whereas in 1988, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. And whereas, in honor of these thousands of children that die each year in Minnesota, Infants Remembered in Silence, Inc., respectfully requests that Saturday, October 15th, 2022, be recognized as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Therefore, I, Paul Ranky, Mayor of Oakdale, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim the 15th day of October 2022, be recognized at Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. In witness thereof, I have hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Oakdale to be affixed on this 11th day of October 2022. Pretty cool. Councilors, next up on the agenda are the consensus motions. Oops.
Nope. Open forum.
Next up on the agenda is open forum. Open forum is a time when anybody's in the audience who want to comment on anything that's going on in the city can do so. What our tradition is, is that the person approaches the podium, states their name and address, and then shares with us the topic that's on their mind. Typically it's three minutes, and if it's a large group with lots of people, the instructions that I normally give is that if somebody else wants to say the same thing as the person before them, they can just say that without going through the whole three minutes again. So open up to the, anybody in the audience who would like to comment on anything, please approach the podium. Seeing none, I'm going to close that and move on to the next item, which is the consensus motions. So in front of us, we have A through J without F, I think is how the amendment goes. So A, B, C, D, E, G, H, I, J. Councilors, upon review, do you want to make any changes or poll any of them? Could I have a motion then, please?
I'll make a motion to approve consensus motions, A through J without F.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then those motions, A through J without F, pass as presented. Thank you. Next up is a portion that we call the Advisory Boards and Commissions. So the, we have a number of advisory boards, and each of us get a chance or get the opportunity to be involved with those commissions as a liaison. And then at this time, we get to report back to whatever was happening with that, with that commission. So the first one is the Economic Development Commission, and Councilmember Olson is the liaison, there was no meeting. The second one was the Environmental Management Commission. Council liaison is Counselor Zabel. There was also no meeting. The Planning Commission, Counselor Swedberg is the liaison, they did meet on the 6th. Want to share anything?
Sure. I was not able to attend, that was my anniversary that night, so we went out to Two Harbors to celebrate and took a long weekend for that. But anyway, I got great notes from Luke, and I can say that the Planning Commission met on October 6th to discuss the Rowers Development at Willowbrook, Willowbrook Seventh Edition Development. This is a 190-unit apartment building with 79 townhome units, all of which are market rate rental units. The request consists of a PUD amendment, preliminary and final plat, noise variance, and two site plans for two different landscaping plans to facilitate the development. There were a few public comments about the traffic that will be generated from the development and the status of 40th Street. The commission concurred with staff and recommended approval of the request subject to certain conditions.
Very good. Thank you. The next commission that we have is the Parks and Recreation Commission. Councilmember Engerputson is the liaison, there was also no meeting for that commission this last month. Finally, the Tree Board is a board that I'm the liaison for, and we also didn't have any meetings. Moving on to the next part of the agenda is our staff reports. I think first up tonight is our Police Department, Chief Newton. Good evening.
Tonight, I'll provide a brief summary on why the Police Department recommended the denial of the massage license and therapy license for Panda Massage. In June of this year, the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension received a tip reporting illicit activity occurring at Panda Massage. The Bureau of Criminal Apprehension sent this tip to the East Metro Sex Trafficking Task The task force decided to initiate an investigation based on that tip. During the investigation, detectives conducted several days of surveillance, and they also stopped some individuals leaving the establishment. During six days of surveillance, detectives noted that they saw 79 people enter the establishment. During six days of surveillance, detectives noted that they saw 79 people enter the establishment. All 79 of those people were males. Detectives also noted that registration checks of vehicles show that a lot of people drove a long distance to go to that massage business. Detectives also found online advertisements showing illicit activity for the business of Panda Massage. Detectives made some stops of individuals leaving that establishment. And during those stops, I'll give a few examples of what detectives learned. Detective said they stopped an individual. He reported he did receive a massage from Panda. He said he was offered a sexual act, which he described to be a handjob. The male said he declined that offer, and he said he would not be going back to that establishment. In July, officers stopped a male who received a massage from Panda. He said that he did not receive a sexual service. However, the male said during the massage, the female employee took his hand and placed it on her breast while she was massaging his groin area. Detectives asked that male if by chance any of his bodily fluids would be found in that business, and he said it could have happened by happenstance. Twice in August, detectives stopped two individuals, both leaving the establishment. Both of them said they had received a massage, and one of them reported during that massage, the male masturbated to a point of ejaculation in front of the female employee. And this male told detectives that the employee offered him a hot towel so he could clean himself afterwards. The other male also reported that he masturbated in front of the female employee while receiving a massage. The task force ultimately closed their investigation, recommending no criminal charges. However, the Police Department reviewed all those reports, and in light of that information documented by detectives, the Police Department recommended the denial of the massage license. Reason being, for misconduct, it is not of good moral, moral character and failure to comply with basic health standards. That is all I have. With that, I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Counselors, anything for Chief Newton? Okay, thank you very much. I think I was made aware that there was a petition from the applicant that would like to speak to us.
Yes.
You're welcome to approach the podium, and the, the way that this goes tonight, since it's not a public hearing, we'll listen to your comments and take note of them.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Nathan Hanson, I'm an attorney. I was retained by, how do we say your name again? Shan Chuan Wei, to assist her with this licensure issue. I'm an attorney in North St. Paul. And she opposes this non-renewal of her license. It seems like an extraordinary amount of resources were spent on this, which, actually, I was reflecting, I, I had a client whose son died of a fentanyl overdose in Oakdale last year. And he was told by, the father was told by the detective that one person dies every week in Oakdale of a fentanyl overdose. And he talked to the detective about it to track down, about the people who were sold his 21-year-old son, who I represented, that's what he hired me for, the fentanyl. And he said they just didn't have the resources for it. And here we are. They've got six days of surveillance, 79 people, and this woman here, who's a Chinese refugee, who denies these allegations. And I did look over the allegations. They, we don't, there's no names attached to them. I certainly understand, and I've explained to her that, you know, there's a lower threshold for licensure versus a criminal case. I mean, these are two different things we're talking about. This isn't court. Even so, you know, there, there's somebody else that worked with her there, but she denies vehemently any conduct like this at her establishment, and she would just like to make some comments. And then, so I'm just here to assist her.
Fair enough. Ma'am, good evening. So please state your name and.
So first, thank you for take precious time. I'm sorry, okay. Now, I just introduce myself, and you can call me Emma, my name is Shan Chuan, last name is Wei. Hmm, sorry, give me a second. I'm 35 years old, and I'm a mom, and I'm a daughter. I have twins, boy, they are 11 years old. I see that because policemen don't know my all information about me. I have been a United States American almost seven and a half years. I stay Minnesota five years, almost six years. Today, I come here, look for my lessons, but it's very important me for my reputation. Okay? I know what I did. I don't know how can true people talking about me, good or bad. They can do, they can say anything they want, but I only know what I did. This refused my lessons. The reason, take my breath away, because they said I have moral problem. Okay? Any, any policeman do check back around me again, or anything they want, please don't tell me I'm, I'm moral problem people. I'm not. I'm good people, I'm good heart, I'm kind, I'm grateful, I'm brave, I'm a mom. If you see that, how I can have faces, they're American. They kill me. The reason kill me fairly. Okay? I'm not looking for lesson, you cancel my lessons, okay? But don't tell me I have moral problem person. It's not fair for me. I want to ask why we did. I'm a mom. We know the mom love children anyway, but I don't think so children take mom's love That's I want to say. People liar. I want to give me a chance. Because I have, I spend lots money for my business by myself. And I have, I have another two years list for the rent. What I can do? That's not I want my life, okay? I live in Minnesota, I spend 10 months and 7,000 for learn my lessons, I take my lessons. Wherever I respect, everybody make decide, design. But I can't accept the reason for refuse my lessons. That's all I want to say. I can't receive, I can't receive the reason for refused my lessons. No, I'm not this moral problem person. That's I want to stay here for, want to say that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just have a brief, I just wanted to note one other thing, and then I had a procedural question. They, the police, this task force, they got a warrant to put a tracking device on her car. They gave her, she showed me this return of service that they got, and they tracked her vehicle for three months. So they haven't found any criminal activity. I understand that there's a difference here for, of licensure versus criminal activity, but I think, you know, all things considered, that you, you should just give her a chance, and they can keep an eye on it or whatever. I just wish that this, really, this level of scrutiny was given to the fentanyl problem when people are dying. I mean, this is, as a resident of Washington County, I live in Montomede, I, I'm like shocked that I have a client whose dad was told, we don't have the resources to go after fentanyl dealers, but we've got six days, we got a three-month warrant, we've got, it's unbelievable, I'm really shocked, actually. Anyways, I was wondering procedurally, what is, what is, do, when do they consider the renewal or non, rather, the non-renewal of her license?
The non-renewal is happening tonight.
Okay.
And Jim, what are the next steps on?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Counsel, my understanding is the formal license period expired on September 30th?
Yes.
Okay. So what's before tonight is the non-renewal of that license. And the council can take action on that tonight if they decide, or they could pass formal information. So if it's not renewed, as of October 1st of this year, she didn't have a license.
So she would just like these comments that she's made here to be incorporated into that decision later on? Is that, is that fair?
Yes, and so I also make sure you understand, the application tonight is for two types of license. One is the establishment to run the business, and the other one is an individual masseuse license for the applicant. So just want the council to understand that, too, that it's, it's she's in control of the establishment.
So she's in the non, she's, she opposes the non-renewal of each of those licenses?
And maybe just so the record's clear, I did provide Mr. Hanson with a full copy of the police report. Could we just verify that for the record that you?
Yeah, he did. Mr. Thompson was fine, he was great, a professional, sent me the summary, and I appreciate his timeliness in that. Your staff was helpful in getting us on the agenda, and I really appreciate the respect in that regard. I just think that with the allegations here being a little bit hearsay and stuff, that she'd get a little bit more due process and be given another chance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, I do appreciate the courtesy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You can go ahead and just grab a seat. Counselors, questions for Jim?
Yeah, Jim, is there a, is there a legal threshold here that we're, that we're legally, is it preponderance? Like what, what, is there a, I mean, is it just, is it entirely subjective to us?
No, the, it's not entirely subjective, okay, but the, I don't have the code provision in front of me, but the standard that the police chief referenced is a legitimate basis for denying a license. Whether you think the facts support that or not is up to the council to decide. That's about all I can, it is no, it's not a preponderance, it's, it's, is there sufficient evidence presented to the council that you believe it's not appropriate to renew the license based on the moral standard that the chief referenced? So in other words, it's not a civil trial, that would be a preponderance of the evidence. It's not a criminal trial, which would be beyond a reasonable doubt. This is a licensing thing, you have to act reasonable on that, and you have a lot of discretion on this.
Additional?
Yeah, my only other comment is, you know, I certainly respect Chief Newton's recommendation. We're dealing with someone's livelihood here, you know, and I, you know, and I'm, I'm a big believer that, you know, if you're going to do business in Oakdale, you have to conduct yourself in a way that adheres with the law. Yeah, this is just a really tough one.
Suzy, thoughts?
I have questions, but I don't know if Chief Newton can answer them.
Chief, are you open to discuss with us?
If you tell me that it's inappropriate, or you can't answer, I'm fine with that. Were there any minors involved? And your reason to not press charges, if you can kind of elaborate on that?
Sure, this was the, the East Metro Sex Trafficking Task Force, specifically geared towards sex crimes and human trafficking. And based on the information they received, they did consult with prosecutors for the county attorney's office and our city prosecutor as well. And when you're talking about sex crimes, you're talking about specifics of sexual contact, and they felt that there was not enough to pursue a criminal charge based on the fact that these men were reportedly pleasuring themselves.
Hold on a second, you, I'll come back to you.
In relation to the human trafficking comment, you didn't find any evidence related to that? Or can you?
What I can say is that the investigation of Panda Massage in Oakdale is closed. There are still working other potential active investigations.
Okay, thank you.
Jake?
Well, Suzy asked my question, but Chief, are you allowed to elaborate? Are those other investigations as a result of the Panda Massage investigation? Or can you comment on that, or?
I, I don't know that for fact. I haven't been able to review all the reports, as some of that was redacted, and I didn't have access to that information. But if it were, I would not be able to divulge it.
Colleen?
Well.
Excuse me.
I would say that how often does Chief Newton or anyone come up here and ask us to deny a license? It doesn't happen very often. In fact, I think this is the first time since I've been on council that someone has. So to me, that speaks volumes, that there must be something there. So I would support the denial at this time, unfortunately.
My part is that the ordinance has that moral behavior piece, which, what I heard tonight and what I've read internally, the establishment has gone beyond, and I'm not proud of what has taken place there, or what is alleged have taken place there. So I am comfortable denying these, these two, these two licenses. So, counselors, if there's something else for Chief, let's do that.
You know, my only comment is I'm never comfortable doing that, but in this case, I think it, I think denying the licenses is the right thing to do, just based on what we know, so.
You okay to stop the discussion, Chief, or Jim?
Yes.
Thanks, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Counsel, if the appropriate motion, then would be a motion to deny the renewal of both licenses based on the information presented by Police Chief tonight and in his report that he previously prepared concerning this matter.
So I'm going to make the motion, guys, that we approve the recommendation of the Oakdale Police Department, recommendation of the denial of the therapy and the premise license, renewal for Panda Massage, Zing LLC, located at 5695 Geneva Avenue North. This is based on the information presented by the Police Chief Newton tonight, and also information in Police Chief Newton's report. Could I have a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, is there discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Then the motion passes three to one. Thank you. Good night. Next up on the agenda is the time with the city attorney.
Whoops.
Looks like you were going to say something.
Nothing further to report tonight.
Counselors, anything for Jim?
No.
Then there's, next on the agenda is a time with the Then there's, next on the agenda is a time with the City, or City Administrator, Ms. Volkers.
Mr. Mayor and the Council, I don't have anything to report tonight.
Counselor, anything for Chris? Okay. Then the next up is the Council Presentations. I think I'll start on my left. Councilmember Swedberg?
I'll start with the easy one first. Wanna say, do a shout out to Public Works for, they're doing a lot of the street cleaning with all the leaves. I've been seeing them out, and in my neighborhood, we have a lot of leaves, so they've been doing a great job. So, thanks, Jim. Please pass on that message. Okay? The second one is, I was asked to expand upon my vote last City Council on approving the deck variance. This is where the deck expanded beyond the five-foot setback, so...
Counselor, does this see one that the deck was rebuilt per the original, which was beyond what our traditional variance was?
Right. Well, actually, there's no, the new deck is the same as the old, there's no difference. There's no evidence that that was changed. So my point was, why I chose to vote to approve the variance was that deck had been in effect over 30 years. So, and when it was redone in 2019, there was no evidence that it expanded beyond what it was originally. And it's an unfortunate incident for both the resident and the neighbor. And there was no win situation. And I thought with adding the fee, additional fee, to the permit was the right thing to do and to kind of move on, go on from there. So anyway, I just wanted to try to explain, and I know some people will not still be happy with that answer, but that's why I did vote the way I did. Thank you.
Anything else?
No.
Councilmember Olson?
Nothing from me.
Councilmember Edgar Putson?
I just want to give a shout out to our City Administrator. She did a great job giving the state of the city in the absence of our mayor.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, she did.
I heard she did.
Yeah, she did.
Because now she's turned up right there.
Don't expect that. Thanks.
That's all I have.
I agree. So let me lead off on that. So at the State of the City, which is always a cool thing to do in the background of work that was done by our Communications Manager, Lori Polk Rebecca, and then City Administrator Volkers to prepare that for me was immense. And then my disappointment in not being able to be there was also pretty large. So thank you for filling in for me. Couple of things that I wanted to share then was that there's the last Oakdale Farmers' Market coming up. This is the last one of the season, being held tomorrow, October 12th. This takes place from 2:00 to 6:30 at the City Hall parking lot. And this final market will be the perfect place for a quick pickup of the fall favorites like the apples, squash, and pumpkins. We just mentioned the State of the City presentation. That presentation will be available online next week. So 2022 is a huge year. Credit rating upgrade, significant element. Our new Open Gov financial tool, another significant element that every department had and almost, and many, many other employees were involved with, is amazing. The website was redesigned. We've had really, really special community events and really fun and exciting things that we traditionally enjoyed. We got canceled for the COVID, and now we're able to bring them back. We've got a number of development projects. Andy, I think our Community Development Director, Andy Getzloff, was sharing with us that there were 32 active development projects. And then our Chief Building Official, Greg Brady, was also talking about his workload with the taking care of the permits for the shingling, approaching 1,700 permits to issue and to respond to. So there's been a ton of highlights this year. Oakdale Voters, coming up here for the general election, Oakdale Voters will see two questions on the ballot this fall. This is for the local option sales tax designed to fund two city projects. The first city project is the expansion remodel of our current police facility. The second one is the new Public Works facility. Those are under the local option sales tax. Questions on the ballot. Part of that, then, is a chance to understand more about what that all involves. So we have two new events, and I'd like everyone, anyone, to join me for a Walk with the Mayor event in October. These walks will give community members the opportunity to share their opinions and thoughts with me while walking around the city properties and seeing firsthand the conditions that we are working with. The first walk with the mayor will take place here Tuesday, October 18th, at 5:00. This will take place at the Public Works Campus, located at 1900 Hadley Avenue North. And I'll be able to walk with Jim Romanek, our Public Works Director, and it'll be good. The second walk with the mayor will be on Saturday, October 29th, at 9:00 in the morning. This is going to be at the police facility connected, which is connected to City Hall here at 1584 Hadley Avenue North. So please, take the time to come, share your thoughts, ask questions, tour the facilities, and learn about this local option sales tax. There's no registration required, but we do ask you to wear some comfortable shoes and then meet at the walk location at the designated time. I believe, Chris, that this information will be on our website?
Yes.
For people to refresh themselves about the time.
At social media, the website, yep.
Very good. And that's all I have. So let's move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the claims. So in front of us, we have the claims from September 28th, 2022 through October 11th, 2022. The claims amount to $4,073,914.91. Upon review, Counselors, were there any questions or things that you wanted to talk about? Could I have a motion then, please?
Make a motion to approve claims as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then the claims are approved as presented. Thank you. Could I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Is a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and good night.